Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Thursday, May 21st, 2020 Montgomery County Council Meeting. We're going to begin our meeting with hearing from Councilmember Reamer, who's going to tell us about his hero.
Thank you, Council President Sidney Katz. The federal failure to secure adequate supplies of masks, gowns, and other key protective equipment has cost thousands of lives in the COVID-19 pandemic. Local communities like ours have been left to their own resources to create supplies of gear needed by healthcare workers to prevent the spread of the virus in their facilities. In that context of catastrophe, our local makers or small-scale manufacturers have been saving lives week after week by putting their sewing machines, 3D printers, and other manufacturing equipment to use making protective gear. My heroes today exemplify the spirit of our maker community. They are a group of volunteers called MOCO Fighting COVID-19, founded by Dr. Usha Banag, a local dentist with two dental practices in Bethesda and Silver Spring. Like other dentists, Dr. Banag's two offices were shut down on March 16th. After donating their existing supplies of masks and gowns to hospitals, Dr. Banag and her team shifted to making face shields. A face shield is printed on a 3D printer by making the frame sort of like a visor frame, which is then fitted with a shield or visor lens that covers the face. In combination with face coverings or masks, this can reduce the exposure of the person wearing it to the tiny vapor droplets that carry the virus. Dr. Banag put her own 3D printers into use and teamed up with other dental personnel to do the same. As the needs increased, Dr. Banag teamed up with local residents in the area who shared the same passion for helping the community to fight COVID-19. From students as young as 10 years old to high school students from Blair and Walter Johnson, from local college students to those far away in New York, from local dentists to Montgomery College professors, families across the area have been making face shields and masks 24/7. Ordinary citizens of different backgrounds coming together to become MOCO Fighting COVID-19. Using the platform and the network of Smiles on Wings, the charity that Dr. Banag founded to provide humanitarian work in Thailand, MOCO MD Fighting COVID-19 was able to raise funds and expand the effort. And working as a team, they have produced thousands of face shields now. These protective devices have been shared with first responders, nursing homes, hospitals, and essential employees. Add it all together, the group has delivered more than 13,000 pieces of PPE to 98 different facilities. As the state of Maryland heads into reopening, MOCO MD Fighting COVID-19 team is still producing face shields and masks in full force. The words that I have for her and the community of volunteers that have come together are inspiring, life-saving, and embodying the spirit of community response. In her own words, Dr. Banag says, "For me, as an immigrant, it's an honor to serve my adopted community that has given me an opportunity to change my life and to make a difference." We thank her for her service. Finally, I will note that as difficult as this crisis is for all of us, for our residents of Asian heritage, there is another layer to the challenge, as they are also dealing with the stress caused by the stigma of racism stemming from some people's efforts to deflect blame for the failures of the American public health system. That's wrong. We appreciate and value every single person in our community. We are united in common cause, and we recognize the contributions of our Asian-American community to fighting COVID-19. We couldn't do it without you. Thank you, Dr. Banag, and everyone in MOCO Fighting COVID-19. You are community heroes. I would like to just read the names of those who are part of the team if I could. There's a slideshow that will accompany the video broadcast. Georgie Carter, George Torres, Linda Quach, Anton Pruslawski, Janine Song, Dr. Usha Banag, Dr. Edmund Liu and his kids, Tanya Puthren, Nolan Lizmi, Alex and Paul Stankis, Du Dorheng, and Kiki Marnady, Penny Kovak, Keegan and Connor Leggy, Nick Lunenfeld, Jack and Evan and Ryan Golub, Alex Webb, Dr. Andy Hork, Norman the Mascot, Dr. Usha Banag and Barack Tamir, Arjun Oberoi, Priya Dal Sani, D'Sanya, Professor Deborah Solomon and Mike Wiles, Serena Tsai, John Lenasa, Ken Christine and her family, Kenneth, Carter Morik, Manwan Family, Amy, Lila and Mason Halstein, Jenny, Michael Halls, Erica, and family. Thank you all for everything you're doing to make our community safer in this difficult time. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Ms. Paradise, I understand that the clerk is not able to get on the call at this point. Ms. Paradise, is there any announcements or changes to our agenda?
Should I do it again?
Yeah, yeah. Excuse me, Mary Ann. Go ahead, please.
Yes, there's an addendum today. Announcement, the council will hold a public hearing on Bill 8-20, Bicycles and E-Scooters Operating Requirements and Registration on June 9th at 1:30. And there's, in addition to the consent calendar, introduction of a special appropriation to the Montgomery County Public Schools FY20 capital budget and amendment to the FY19 to '24 CIP. $446,075 for Technology Modernization Project. That is all.
Thank you very much. I too have an announcement that I just was just confirmed literally within the minute or two. There is a, at the request of Senator Ben Cardin, a Zoom meeting is being scheduled for Wednesday, May 27th, Wednesday, May 27th, from 10 o'clock to 10:45 in the morning. Options for the public to listen to this discussion will be on the council website by Tuesday, the next Tuesday. So it's the Zoom meeting with, the Zoom meeting will be from 10 to 10:45 on May the 27th. Thank you. And the next item that we have is, we need a motion to approve the consent calendar. Is there a motion?
It's been moved.
It's been moved by Councilmember Navarro, seconded by Councilmember Rice. There are no discussions.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to highlight one of our consent calendar items, which is an introduction, if I'm looking at this correctly, for our special appropriation to Montgomery County Public Schools. I really want to thank every single one of my colleagues understanding that we are moving into this new digital age. We need to make sure that we're continuously replacing our equipment, and we'll need to do even more of this come once we find out our understanding for what's happening this fall. So from that perspective, again, I just want to thank my colleagues for their continued support.
Thank you. It has been moved and by Councilmember Navarro, seconded by Councilmember Rice, that we approve our consent calendar. All those in favor, please raise your hand, and that is unanimous. Thank you. The next item that we have is the action items on air budget. This is no secret to any of us that we will be voting on this today, and it's my understanding we can do it en banc in some cases. However, I just learned that we're going to need to do county government as a standalone and then come back to doing things as a grouping. So is there a motion to approve the county government budget?
So moved.
It was moved by Councilmember Navarro, seconded by Councilmember Reamer. All those in favor, please. Did you? Yes, Councilmember Friedson, yes.
Yeah, apologies. Just very quickly, I'm on the board of Bethesda Green. There's a community grant for Bethesda Green, and in keeping with what I did last year and other council members have done in the past, I'd like to be reflected as an abstention on the Bethesda Green grant and then vote on the balance of the budget.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember, I get, Mr. Howard, Craig Howard, did you have something to say for Ms. Michelson?
No, I did not. I just want to, but I do think that we should, I just want to be clear on which resolutions you are voting on right now. If you're talking about the county government operating budget, that is item number 10. I just want to make sure people understand that you're talking about that item as opposed to item number one, which is the county government capital budget.
I appreciate that because I looked at county government and I did look into, so that you're abstaining, then, Councilmember Friedson, on item 10?
Correct. Yeah, I thought you were saying operating budget. I apologize if you were.
Yeah, no, okay. Very good. So at this point, then, we're going to ask for a motion for the, so that we're clear, for items 1 through 9 for air budget. Items 1 through 9. Councilmember Navarro, did you?
So moved.
And Councilmember Rice, would you like to second that? Okay. So items 1 through 9 was, the motion was made by Councilmember Navarro, seconded by Councilmember Rice. All those in favor, please raise your hand, and that carries unanimously. All right, now we're at count, we're at number 10, and Councilmember Friedson has already made a statement. Would you like to reiterate that?
Yeah, just for formality, I just, since I serve on the Bethesda Green Board, in keeping with what I have done in the past and other council members have done in the past, I'd like to be reflected as an abstention on the Bethesda Green Community Grant Budget item, and then vote on the balance of the operating budget for the Montgomery County Government, please. Thank you.
So we need a motion, thank you, Councilmember, we need a motion for item 10, the county government operating budget. Is there a motion?
So moved.
It was moved by Councilmember Reamer, seconded by Councilmember Juwondo. All those in favor, please raise your hand, and that is unanimous with the one caveat of Councilmember Friedson. We're now going to vote on items 11 through 15. Items 11 through 15. Is there a motion?
So moved.
It was moved by Councilmember Reamer, seconded by, who was that name?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Navarro. All those in favor, please raise your hand, and that carries unanimously. Very good. The next item that we have are items 16 through 18, WSSC, WSSC's capital operating budget and the County Cable Communications Plan. Is there a motion?
So moved.
It was moved by Councilmember Navarro, seconded by Councilmember Rice. All those in favor, please raise your hand, and that carries unanimously. The next item that we have is items 19 through 21. The property tax rate, the FY21 property tax rate and authorize the substitution of current revenue for general obligation bonds and the resolution to set amount of property tax credit for income tax offset. Is there a motion?
So moved.
It was moved by Councilmember Reamer, seconded by, who was, Councilmember Friedson. All those in favor, please raise your hand, and that carries unanimously as well. Councilmember Rice, please.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. President, and I just wanted to make sure that now that we've voted on these various issues, an update for my colleagues. So I appreciate a moment to just state that on Monday, following our CIP discussion, I contacted Montgomery County Public Schools Superintendent Dr. Jack Smith to discuss the status of the capital budget and the next steps in the educational facility planning process. I shared with him that our intent of the council was to return to have CIP discussions in August or September this year, once economic and public health conditions are more focused, and with the benefit of additional fiscal and project-specific information. I expressed my interest in working with Montgomery County Public Schools and the school board to provide more support and resources for top priority projects delayed in the MCC, MCPS CIP, like South Lake Elementary School. I greatly appreciate Dr. Smith's support and his intent to work with his MCPS colleagues to revisit the MCPS CIP in the context of additional fiscal resources that could be available or allocated later this year. I understand that MCPS and the council staff will continue to work over the summer to refine the analysis of the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic on the county construction program and to move forward expeditiously with as many priority projects as possible. So I just wanted to make sure that my colleagues know about that announcement for that upcoming impending work session in the early fall. Thank you so much, Mr. President, and thank you to all of my colleagues.
Thank you, Councilmember Rice. I just wanted to publicly thank you for all of your hard work, not just on this budget and all my colleagues for that matter, but especially for the MCPS budget. I too, and as all my colleagues mentioned last, it seems like it was forever ago, and I guess it was two, two days ago, that we're very concerned about South Lake Elementary and other schools as well, and that we all need to work together to get this accomplished. I know that you were leading the charge on that with Dr. Smith and others from MCPS, so I sincerely appreciate it. And obviously, though I'm not on the Education and Culture Committee, when South Lake Elementary comes up, I certainly would be more than happy to sit in on those meetings so that we can get the outcome that we want it to happen.
I'll make sure that everybody receives an invitation and that it's a convenient time for all, because I know this is important to every single one of you as colleagues, and there are all different projects that I know that you guys all care about. So we'll make sure that we coordinate that with your offices.
Thank you very much. And with that, we actually are going to have to take a recess now because we have, we're going to sit as the Board of Health at 11 o'clock, and I'm, yeah, it's too early to even suggest that Dr. Gales and Dr. Stoddard might be here. So we are on recess until 11 o'clock, and then we will be back. And just for anyone who is wanting to know what our schedule is after that, once we hear from Dr. Stoddard and Dr. Gales, we will then go on another recess, and then at 2:30, we will get an update, a briefing by the Maryland Department of Transportation on the status of the Purple Line consideration, uh, construction. It is my understanding that will start at 2:30, and it's my understanding that the people from the Department of Transportation need to end that meeting by 3:30. That's a hard stop. So what we will try, we will start on time, and we will have a hard stop at 3:30, thank, at that, for, after that, for that part of the meeting. So thank you very much. We will see each other at 11. Thank you. So they, I believe that Michelle is telling me that they have fixed the audio, so everything is okay at this point. Very good. Well, we are now back from recess. Thank you very much for everyone joining us again, and we're going to hear, we're going to be sitting as the Board of Health, and we're going to hear from Dr. Gales and Dr. Stoddard. Dr. Gales, we're going to ask you to speak first, please. And just so we're aware, are you under any time constraint, either you or Dr. Stoddard, today?
Good morning. Can you hear me?
We can. Good morning.
I personally have a hard stop at noon.
At noon, okay. And Dr. Stoddard, are you traveling with him or not traveling with him?
No where I'd rather be than with you all here today, so I can be as long here as long as you need.
Yeah, wow. That's dangerous to tell us that, Dr. Stoddard. Okay. Well, what we're going to ask is Dr. Gales, obviously, to please go first, and then we'll, we'll go through and we'll, we'll continue on as we go. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you as always for the opportunity to speak with you all. And I will say thank you to Earl, who often joins me in these calls and has to sit and listen to me talk and then provide his updates. I'm open to switching the order sometimes, and you just let me know so that we can get the information out. I hope you all are having a good Thursday. Want to give some highlights, and then I anticipate that there will be a number of questions and conversation. So a couple of updates. Big, big-ticket item that was released this, this week is the dashboard that provides data for the metrics that we talked about last week in terms of guiding the process of beginning to reopen. Now, a couple of things to highlight is that we continue to work very closely with our colleagues across the state of Maryland, as well as the national capital region, including DC and Northern Virginia, to look at these metrics and to see where we are. In fact, we've had daily calls or conversations with Dr. Nesbit in DC and almost daily calls with our colleagues in Prince George's County, talking through where they are. And we remain united in terms of looking at the projects, how we move forward. So as it relates to our data dashboard, again, I know that there was significant input from council in terms of how to tweak it and improve it in terms of how it's displayed. We are showing positive movement, looking at the three-day averages. I think it's, it's showing a number of the measures have actually had double-digit days in terms of the last 14 days where we've seen positive movement, and there are a number of other areas. For example, the number of new cases on a daily basis are trending in the right direction. Now, certainly, there was an aberration, or we hope it was an aberration, two days ago, when there were reported 533 new cases. That changed yesterday to 102, and I confess, I don't have aggregate numbers this morning in front of me, but the previous day suggested that we were trending downward in that area. Now, across the board, we do see positive movements, but again, not every movement, every measure is 100% in terms of where we want to be. For example, continue to have concerns about ICU capacity. As we've talked before, I think on our Monday call, a number of the hospitals have actually, earlier this week, four of the six hospitals were at full capacity for their original configurations for ICU beds. To this morning, two of them are at capacity. The others, more beds are becoming available. In addition to that, from an acute bed perspective, only one of the hospitals has utilized some of their emergency room space to bore patients. So those numbers are moving in the right direction, but still a ways to go. Now, to that end, we had some conversations. We had a call with the state on Tuesday to discuss surge capacity, and part of that strategy was looking at how we could potentially repurpose spaces at the Tacoma Park Campus of Washington Adventist to provide additional ICU bed capacity, which would increase the denominator and bring that percentage and bring the percentage of ICU beds in use down and give us the opportunity to grow should we need those spaces in the future. So I say all that to say that the numbers are trending in the right direction. Let me be very clear, that does not mean we are making any pronouncements on a particular day to say, you know, May 26th, May 29th, June 4th is when we would reopen. Merely just suggesting that the data is moving in a direction so that we can entertain some of those conversations and discuss how to safely move forward and what that looks like. Let me just again emphasize that from a health perspective, we've not made any of those declarations, and we'll continue to provide input and insight to the county executive and county council as to how we best move forward for us as a county and also consistent with our partners in the region. Now, one of, a couple of the other indicators that are essential to that that are more of the qualitative components include testing capacity. We continue to make strides in that area, and our high-throughput option will be able to bring on 10,000 tests a week for the next two weeks and upwards of 20,000 tests a week, just simply from that modality. In addition to that, the state has made allocations where they are providing, we haven't received them yet, but we're told that they're coming, weekly allocations of additional nasopharyngeal swab capacity that the state will support, and we hope to utilize that to bolster our alternative test sites as well as our mobile testing arm, once that is stood up at the beginning of next week is our goal. And we also have been working with a, a number of community partners to explore creating pop-up testing in high-volume areas throughout the county. Additionally, the governor has made some announcements about requiring testing in a number of settings. We continue to wait for specifics on that. As it relates to testing in nursing homes, I think we talked about it on Monday, but we, as of this morning, 25 of our 33 nursing homes have scheduled visits that have either been completed or on the books to be completed by the National Guard team from the state, and we are working with them to figure out how we can augment, supplement, and get those remaining eight nursing homes tested as soon as possible within that timeframe. Our understanding is that, we hope, at least from the health officer perspective, is that there will be consideration to expand that universal testing from the state perspective to assisted living facilities and other long-term care facilities. And certainly, in the absence of that or even supplementing that effort, we are looking into how we can support that and provide testing in those facilities and spaces over the next week or so. Again, want to emphasize that when we're looking at the high-throughput testing option, as we've talked about before, our goal is to begin opening up opportunities for asymptomatic individuals that will be phased in as we increase capacity from that perspective, focusing on our essential employees. The first wave will be our first-line responders, working very closely with our partners in law enforcement, corrections, police, and firing rescue. And then the second wave will be also looking at other essential employees across other different agencies within the county, as well as providing testing opportunities for our healthcare workers. And then, as that expands, increasing opportunities and access for other first-line responders, essential employees, and ultimately, hopefully, in the near future, the general public to be able to access those resources. Another essential component to moving forward is the presence and sustainability of contact tracing. As I've mentioned before, too, we are working with the state, so we continue to do contact tracing here, but the state is leading an effort to coordinate with all of the health departments across the state, utilizing their platform. That platform will go live next week. All of our staff who are working through that will be trained on Tuesday, and then we'll be able to utilize, utilize the electronic platform for the state that includes information from the CRIS database, as well as a shared platform where we're able to access across different jurisdictions. So that will be in place next week, and that will address our metric in terms of being able to ensure contact tracing within the first 24 hours of all new cases. And again, the model that is being used is the state is hiring over 1,000 individuals, and they will perform the contact tracing, the initial contact tracing on a daily basis for the cases as they come in from the CRIS database and the NEX database. And then the local health departments, within their respect, however, their respective protocols, will supplement that and continue that contact tracing process. Couple of other components I want to highlight, we are doing some educational outreach opportunities. Healthy Montgomery is going to sponsor a host of community conversations and webinars. The first one is scheduled for May 29th, next Friday, from 3 to 4 o'clock. Dr. Liu, who is our chief epidemiologist, and myself, will give a conversation in terms of the nuts and bolts of a public health response, and the team continues to partner with our healthcare systems to identify other speakers to participate in that conversation. Other component, we have met with our Montgomery Cares and Safety Net Clinics this week to talk about assessment in terms of how to provide services within the realm of our safety net network as we move forward from COVID and as we continue to work through COVID, including testing, but also making sure that people are continuing to get access to address their other health issues. I did have, one last thing I want to mention is I did have a great conversation with the Medical Society last week, and last night did a, a, we've created a series of conversations that are going to be bi-weekly to talk with the healthcare providers across the county about their emergent needs. Two of the projects that we're going to partner on and work together to get information out on is the effort to encourage parents to get their kids immunized and recognizing that health systems are safe to be able to do that, provide that service, and continuing to encourage residents of the county to, if they have health issues, to not be afraid to access the health system to get the healthcare that they need. I will stop there, and as always, happy to answer any questions you all have.
Thank you very much. Dr. Stoddard, we have several councilmembers that want to ask questions, but it would, how long is your presentation going to be? Should I, can you make, do you want to make your presentation and then ask questions? Because I'm sure they'll also want to ask questions of you.
I'll certainly defer to your judgment. I would say mine.
Couldn't hear you. How long?
I, five to seven minutes.
I think we can last five to seven minutes. Go ahead, please. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, great. So talking about several areas here, personal protective equipment being first. We are doing distributions to essential childcare providers this week of both PPE and cleaning supplies. If we're at the Rombers, we did a round of this last week. It'll continue at the Dennis Avenue Health Center today, or tomorrow and Saturday, and at the Public Safety Headquarters in Gatorsburg on Saturday as well. So those childcare providers can come and pick up those supplies there. We're also doing a direct distribution to our primary care We're also doing a direct distribution to our primary care providers. We're doing a couple of things in that arena, so we've actually stood up a local business, stood up essentially a wholesale opportunity, PPE acquisition for small-scale purchase of PPE. That's available through MOCOPPE.com, but for the cases of supplies that are not available through that source, we're actually still doing distribution to our primary care providers, dental offices, and the like, and they can access that through the county's website. There's a, there's a request form there right on our COVID page under the community resources. We continue to distribute as well to our DD providers, our ID providers, and our nursing homes and long-term care facilities. They are receiving the bulk of the resources that we, you know, that we send out, and will continue to do so throughout this event. We are also continuing to build the stockpile of PPE for, you know, having, giving us a buffer to, for reopening, as Dr. Gales alluded to, giving us a buffer should something return to us in the fall. Obviously, we want to make sure that we're not in the same situation we were in two months ago in terms of PPE ever again, so that continue, that effort continues. I do want to highlight some of the 311 activity, I know this has been something that we've talked about several times before, but, you know, the report from yesterday was noteworthy. We had 833 total COVID-related calls to the 311 call center yesterday. Of those 833, 571 were about related to the EARP program, the Emergency Assistance Relief Payment Program, and 90% of those 571 calls were in Spanish, which is the high-water mark for the percentage of Spanish speakers who are calling in on that program. 102 calls were related to the Rental Assistance Program in HHS, and 74% of those 102 calls were to the Spanish-language queue. So that means that 71% of our total COVID calls were related to those two programs yesterday. And in total, 311, 32% of the calls coming into 311 yesterday were in Spanish, which is about, it's more than six times, six to seven times higher than they see on an average day. And so obviously, the interest from our community is significant, particularly from our Latino community, and obviously, they're ramping up additional call takers to take those. I know there have been some queues of up to, you know, you've several minutes long. These calls are also taking longer, and largely because the people calling in to the Spanish-language queue have more needs in terms of they ask for more services. And so that is not unexpected, necessarily, for anyone who's been working with this, working with our various communities for a long time. But obviously, this just, you know, continues to pose challenges and things that have to be addressed, and, you know, Barry Hudson and Brian Roberts from 311 are actively working to expand the number of Spanish-language call takers into the 311 call center to address that problem. Food Security Task Force, a couple of updates here, working with the Health Human Services Street Outreach Team to connect them directly to food delivery, and so when they're engaging with the public out on the street, offering them services, they're going to also offer them food support services. They're tying in a sort of apparatus between our ethnic grocery stores, our public general services providing transportation support for the goods, and 311 team doing the identification of need and distribution. We also are working on this farm-to-table program that the USDA has launched. I think we've gotten, we're getting 3,000 USDA boxes and distributing them every week. Those are great, because obviously, not only are they food, but they are high nutrition value, fruits and vegetables, other things that can help address some of the food inequities in terms of, you know, and not as many empty calories. A ton additional work in the Food Security Task Force, and I know a lot of that will, you know, I know that there's been some suggestions the council might want to receive its own briefing from the Food Security Task Force, I think that would be entirely appropriate, and that's something I absolutely recommend you do. Couple other items, so we have signed contracts with hotels in Germantown, we already had one with Silver Spring and Gaitersburg as well to do quarantining of persons. We're still finalizing logistics of how the entry point for that will work, it will likely be the disease control call line at Dennis Avenue, but obviously, we want to make sure that they're ready to receive those kinds of calls. They are already being, the rooms are already being utilized by the ready responder teams that Dr. Gels has talked about before, where they identify persons who may need to be quarantined or isolated that can't do so successfully at home. We expect that with contact tracing ramping up through increased testing, through these mass testing options that we're about to launch, we expect that we will identify more people who need this service and have contracts in place to allow us to address that need. The final two points I will make is that we are standing up our recovery framework. I know that a draft of that has been shared with council, we'll be getting additional feedback from you all about how you can be engaged in the process. We take very seriously the partnership between the executive branch and the county council on the recovery, and I think it's very important, and I want to say this, I'm going to say this in every opportunity I can, we know that recovery means more than just reopening. Reopening is but the beginning of recovery. There are many long-term issues, just because we can get a business reopened, for example, does not necessarily mean that that business is fine, they're going to survive, no problem. They're going to have, we have a rent moratorium right now in a lot of places, and obviously, once, once, that's not a, you know, that's not a forever thing, and so we've got to figure out exactly how we move forward beyond the just the initial reopening phase and how we can build in long-term community supports. And it just addresses things like health inequities, health literacy issues, community wealth, and all those things moving forward. The final thing I want to do is a fairly good piece of news, and one, we may have additional on this, but I'll say what we know so far. So FEMA, we are working on FEMA reimbursement for some of the activities that we have undertaken already, and I would expect that some of those costs are going to go up this week and be, you know, requested of. It's important to note that FEMA reimbursement is normally a 75-25 local, you know, 75% federal support, 25% local support. They are going to allow us to use the Coronavirus Relief Fund as that 25% match, which obviously gives us additional flexibility in how we utilize our resources. There is some hope that ultimately FEMA will do 100% reimbursement and not even require that we use the Coronavirus Relief Fund. That's something that was part of some of the congressional packages that are now sitting in the Senate, so we'll see what makes it through and what does not, but we at least have the good piece of news that we can use the CRF funding as the match for the FEMA reimbursements so far, and I will stop there.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Rice. And just so everybody's aware, we discussed earlier, remind everybody that we're going to do the five-minute rule, but after everybody else has spoken, if somebody hadn't gotten their answers, then we'll do another five minutes for that person as well. Okay, Councilmember Rice.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. President. I'll try and be very brief. Dr. Gales and Dr. Stoddard, I guess this question is for the both of you, so thank you, Mr. President, in terms of teeing up both of them. When it comes to recovery efforts, we've heard from a number of business owners that are very concerned about proper practices and procedures that they need to enact to ensure their safety, as well as the safety of their patrons. And so from that perspective, has there been, as a part of this recovery, initial recovery effort, guidance given to folks, especially language-appropriate in a lot of cases, about it's great to hand someone a temporal thermometer, but do they know how to use it properly? Do they know how to keep social distancing while doing it? All those kinds of things, are those mechanisms in place in terms of instruction? And then even when it comes to the purchase of additional equipment, i.e. air purifiers, things like that, installing screens where appropriate, you know, plexiglass screens and the like, is there any guidance being given to folks about what truly are the best practices to, again, ensure the safety of their employees and their patrons, and putting all of that together in terms of webinars or leaflets that you can give out to individual business owners?
Well, I'll take a first crack at it. I'll say, I think that is essential to any strategies talking about reopening, and I think as part of, you know, as we, as we move in that direction, I think that has to be a part of the conversation. So for example, if we're telling a business, you know, and this, again, not committing to any of this right now for those folks watching at home, but say, you know, you say you're going to, there are provisions will be made for you to open up, but we would expect you to have capacity limits, and, you know, consistent with what we did with grocery stores. I think there would need to be, as part of that, some time to give businesses the opportunity to get those provisions in place, and, you know, obviously have enough warning to say, you know, this is potentially coming. I do know that, and I think these conversations will continue to move forward, again, with council involvement, that that is, will be an essential part of that, and it must be a part, because we don't want to have an issue where we're letting businesses open up potentially, having to go back and tell people, you know, you're not doing this properly, you know, or finding businesses, because I think the majority of folks would like to reopen, but they would like to reopen safely.
I would only add, and I don't want to take too much of your time, that, you know, we are already working on guidance for pools, for childcare providers, for certainly the first round of retail. I think I would only just say that there is a lot of guidance that's already out there, we're just trying to pull together, we're not reinventing the wheel, we're trying to pull together what's already out there in an easily digestible manner, but we're just, you know, there's a lot of guidance that's being requested, we're trying to triage it based on who needs the guidance soonest, because they'll be opening up soonest based on how we project the phases to work out, and I think we're going to continue to produce more guidance and update guidance as we go along.
Well, I really appreciate that, and I think that overall, when it, when it comes to what that guidance will look like, again, we just need to make sure that we have language-appropriate, you know, we ran into those problems and continue to have those challenges with 311, we ran into those problems with a lot of our businesses trying to get the initial access to funds, so we know that that presents a challenge to us. But then also from a purchasing standpoint, it's great that we're providing some of the temporal thermometers and others, but there will be some investment that businesses who are already cash-strapped will have to do to be able to meet these guidelines, and so the more information we can give them ahead of time to help them pre-plan and to purchase this stuff, even spread out to how they're going to purchase it, is going to be incredibly important as well, because, you know, that's, that's one of my concerns is that, okay, we pick a date and we say, okay, now things are open, and the reality is, is they haven't had time to prepare, to set up those kinds of things, and still lag well behind, or feel the pressure to go ahead and open even though they don't have all of those things. So I would just ask that, I think that we're saying the same thing and on the same page, but as much information as we can give folks ahead of time, the better. Thank you.
100% agree, 100%.
Thank you. I do think, on that note, though, it should be something that if, when you're saying to a business that you need to get this type of supplies, it should be flexible enough that if those supplies are not available, they should be able to get some kind of a supply that could be substituted for it. So, you know, we don't want to catch 22 here, we want to, we want to be as flexible as we can. Councilmember Navarro, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, and again, thank you, Dr. Stoddard and Dr. Gales. So one of the things that I did bring up to Mr. Andrew Klein today was this notion of some of the articles that have come out regarding opening perhaps in the next two weeks, and making sure, as you can imagine, the interest that exists and the questions that we're receiving. So it would be really important for the council to, to receive that kind of possible information before we read it in particular newspapers or hear the executive speak about that, for example, on the MCM interview. Everybody's so eager, and I know that we have all been super responsible in terms of following the data and trying to make sure that these trends actually hold, but obviously, whenever the executive then makes the comment like, you know, I believe that we're going to be able to open in the next one or two weeks, that sort of sets this frenzy, so I wanted to say that and just request, please let us also get that information, and also your perspective as to why, you know, you believe that that might be a possibility. We've been, we've been very disciplined in now putting out a timeline, so those kinds of comments and articles really work against what we're all trying to do, but appreciate the dashboard, I think that's been such an important addition. I also wanted to point out that I really appreciate how responsive everybody has been. Mr. Sturgis and I had a conversation about strengthening and enhancing staffing, temporary staffing for 311, for example, as we're seeing such an increase. Also had a conversation with the executive about that, and just in general for my colleagues to know, I, as Sheriff Gio, want to pursue a conversation with our HR director to understand how we approach policies of surge staffing, and see if there's anything that the council has to do to facilitate that. This is because we've seen steady, steady increase in demand for, for more information, of course, and Dr. Stoddard, you again cited a very important data point regarding our Spanish-language speakers. I assume also that the town halls that have been held, where we constantly push out 311 as one point of contact, you know, people are receiving that information and they're using it, which is really, which is really wonderful, but some of the wait times have been, you know, extraordinarily long, up to 15 minutes, and so we've been working to troubleshoot all of this in real time, and I can't thank enough those in the administration that have stepped up to really solve these issues right away. And then lastly, regarding the food distribution, we also have had those conversations during some of our briefings about a system, right? Because we do have amazing organizations right now working on a lot of points of distribution, food distribution, but as we're saying, Dr. Stoddard, this is going to last a while. Recovery will also demand a lot of this kind of support, so the quicker that we can get to an actual system where people can predict where these distributions are going to take place, the issue of folks who don't have access to transportation, it's a really important point on whatever it is that we're doing in terms of distribution. So I'm eager to hear sooner than later, you know, what kind of systemic approach we're going to take and how we're going to push that out as we begin to think about recovery. But I can't thank both of you enough, again, for your steady leadership, and how everybody has taken their own piece and really worked hard to ensure that all of this comes together. It's like a puzzle, but I think that we're moving in the right direction, and I think our public, I got to say also publicly, I want to thank our residents for their patience, their trust, and also their, their sense of taking personal responsibility to adhere to these directives. That has not been the case in other jurisdictions, and we see how this has just created a very, very difficult and challenging situation, but I think in Montgomery County, we can be proud of our residents for really stepping up in this way, and, you know, we'll continue to work on this. So not necessarily questions, because I know you have a lot on your plate, but just wanted to share publicly some of those areas that we have been working on and trying to also put out there. Although perhaps I will just ask Dr. Gales to briefly say something about that, you know, because those are questions we're getting about the issue of whether we're going to be reopening in a week or two, just so that the public understand exactly what it is that we're doing and get that information out there.
Sure. Thank you for your feedback and thank you for your question. And again, want to be clear that, you know, from a health perspective, we're not committing to dates, but, you know, at putting the dashboard out in terms of, you know, when we said, here are metrics that we're going to use to guide within that, we do see a number of favorable indicators that recommend we're moving in the right direction, and it does open up the, you know, the idea that we could potentially reopen in the near future. From my perspective, it's more of a, this is, you know, this is informing the process to say we need to be having those conversations about what that looks like, and I think that's, you know, been, you know, at least the general tone of the conversation to say, you know, what does that look like moving forward? How does that compare to other jurisdictions? What types of activities could we potentially safely move forward and do it? And I want to be, make it clear at home for folks is that we're not going to, whenever that comes, when we reopen in some capacity, that doesn't mean we stop tracking the data and say, we've got 14 days, we're done. We're going to continue to look at that data, we're going to probably bring in more data to refine that, because what we don't want to have happen is, as we open up, get to the point where we see indicators requiring us to go backwards. So we're going to be very careful and methodical. Again, we don't want to interfere in people's liberty and their ideas and their ability to do their jobs and function, but we do want to keep them safe, and we're going to be committed, remain committed to that. So I think that basically says we're moving in the right direction, we've seen hope, you know, reason for optimism to be able to do some, make some steps in that direction in the near future. We're not there yet, and we will continue to work with our colleagues in other jurisdictions to figure out how to best move forward.
Thank you. Very much. Councilmember Juwondo.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Dr. Gales and Dr. Stoddard, as always, for all your work. Always want to start there, because I know this is a lot, and it's a very difficult time, and you're doing a lot. and you're doing a lot of things, a lot of balls in the air. So really appreciate the work of you and all the teams and all of our county employees who are helping out. Following up on the line of questioning from Councilmember Navarro to you, Dr. Gales, you know, when I hear and when residents hear things like, we're moving in the right direction soon, in the near future. When we hear those types of comments or, and we heard from the county executive in a couple of interviews, specific timelines. And look, I know just as much as anyone, sometimes things come out that you don't want to come out, but that, and so it might not have been intentional. But the point of consistent messaging, you know, there's, we already saw, unfortunately, with what the governor's actions, the way he decided to proceed, that there was a ton of confusion, right? So the day that he announced, and I think I showed this to you last week, you know, I saw 20 or 30 people playing basketball that day. And now I see barber shops opening and salons and just people are doing things that aren't allowed in Montgomery County, I think in part because of the confusion from the governor, which just underscores the way he handled that situation, which underscores the need for us to be very consistent and clear with our messaging. And so I would ask that, put in a plea that all of us do that. And I know that that's your commitment. And then I would ask, even with the indicators going in the right direction, because we're so low at the amount right now, we're not where we want to be on testing. How can we be sure, and if you could explain to us and to the public, that even these indicators are enough to move into some sort of phase one reopening at some point, despite the fact that we don't have enough testing or widespread availability of testing yet?
Sure. Thank you for the question and thank you for explaining to folks at home the complexities that go into figuring, making these determinations based upon some of the emails that I've received. I don't think everybody quite understands that. I think they want, you know, things to be open now. But to your question, I think that all of the indicators that we're looking at will help determine, as I mentioned, you know, as we move forward, if we do see positive movement, are there activities or things that could be safely done that would not negatively impact those indicators in a way as they continue to move forward? So for example, you know, we've looked at, I guess I mentioned, constant talks with DC and Northern Virginia in terms of are there some shared activities that could be, you know, considered to be low-risk activities that, you know, we would feel comfortable opening that up wouldn't necessarily be a vector of, you know, great transmission. And so that is, that is going to be the reality. How we move forward is going to be a constant revaluation to say, you know, we're making these steps and making these provisions, you know, as the data continues to improve or move forward in a positive direction, we may be able to increase the activities or functions that are included in that. You're on mute.
I'm sorry. Could you just answer specifically the question about testing and how, even without enough testing, how we're able to address that? And then I'm going to ask my other question so I get it in and so that...
Okay, all right. I'll make it really quick then. So in the setting of, you know, again, it's looking at all of the different indicators. So we know that when we increase testing capacity, we're going to capture a number of other cases, particularly those asymptomatic individuals, to arrest them and get them isolated quickly to interrupt their networks of transmission. So we're not just looking at that one sole number, we're looking at the whole spectrum. Because again, if ER visits are dropping, if hospitalizations are dropping, it's suggesting that the severity of it is lessening at least in this time period.
Thank you. And I, that's what I thought, I just wanted to understand. And my last question, my understanding is that we still are not receiving or tracking the county-specific data, testing data by race in Zipco. Can you talk about that and where, how we can get there?
Sure.
Particularly as we ramp up testing, I think that's going to be important.
Yeah, so Dr. Liu is, they're combing back through the previous data to get, and hopefully again, going to release as much information as we have to comment on that. And then as we, I see the hand, but just quickly, one of the things that we're working on and ensuring that when the lab requisition forms are filled out, particularly in the high throughput setting and our alternative test venues, making sure that that ox is checked. And so even if we may not have 100%, we can say anything coming from the county-sponsored testing opportunities, we'll have that, capture that information.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Auburnas.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you both for the continued leadership and dedication. Dr. Gales, we've received some feedback regarding the GO teams. You have shared with us the structure that's in place, which I think makes a lot of sense. On the ground, however, we've been hearing concerns about the confusion, lack of response, lack of coordination. And it's, we've especially been hearing concerns within the developmental disability community, sometimes taking a week to get responses back. And real confusion as to, you know, test kits are dropped off, but then confusion as to how to administer them. And so, and I know there's been issues with the GO teams in other areas. I know you're familiar with those challenges and of course, we're setting up something relatively new and putting it together quickly, but could you respond as to what the response of your team will be working with the state on the issues that have been raised and what the plan is? And then I have one more question after that. Go ahead, Dr. Gales.
I'll go really quickly to get your question in. First question, with the issue with the state GO teams. So we met, so we had a larger conversation. One of the big issues is results reporting, because the way they were entered in the state database and how they were reported back to us. So we reckon that that was a significant challenge. We met with senior officials at the state, representatives from the other jurisdictions who were partnering in that effort to clarify and clear that up. We reckon, and particularly the agency that we work closely with, I take full responsibility for it. We're working to clean that up. As I mentioned before, I spent one Saturday calling families myself, delivering results. We have a dedicated nurse now on staff who is calling to get all of those results distributed to that one, all of the families who are affiliated with that one entity. Part of it is also a scheduling thing. We, over the last week, colleagues in HHS have partnered with colleagues in public health to come up with a strategy that provides more substantial linkage for families identified, particularly to the social support piece. We are working to strengthen the GO team apparatus by having more teams in place. I think that's part of the biggest issue is being able to move people around to accommodate the needs. We're going to bring in, our goal is to get at least four new teams to be able to go out and provide that focused, targeted testing onsite. And again, hopefully bringing in also less invasive testing measures such as self-collection kits would allow for more rapid distribution as well as simpler collection mechanisms so that we can spin things around and get them back to people very quickly.
I appreciate that. I'll follow up with you more specifically on this to elaborate a little bit on the plan, but I appreciate your acknowledgement of it and you're moving towards a strategy. The second question is, we have heard anecdotally from both large, private family medical practices and small family medical practices that they're about to go under, bankrupt because of all of the challenges that they're facing. And so I appreciate that you met with the Medical Society earlier. My understanding is they're conducting a survey literally right now of medical practices across the county. This is very much on the council's radar screen. And we have asked the Office of Legislative Oversight, which I know is working with your office, on giving us as much of an analysis as we can get with the information we have. Is this anecdotal? Is this systemic? And I know we're interested in helping to make sure that we prevent as many of these medical practices from going under as possible because even before COVID, we knew, we know a lot of medical practices were not accepting new patients because they're at capacity. So if too many of them cave at the same time and us probably having another resurgence in the fall and the spring of COVID, and winter of COVID, it's a recipe for disaster. Could you just talk briefly about your conversation with the Medical Society and how that is on your radar screen?
Sure. As a clinician, it's majorly on the radar screen. Particularly, I think you mentioned, one of the first facilities that you mentioned was a pediatric office. So that's obviously near and dear to my heart as a pediatrician. So we, as you mentioned, the Medical Society is working on a survey to get, capture that information. And as I mentioned, we've set up bi-weekly conversations with their members to talk through a lot of those particular issues. One of the other steps I've mentioned before, I didn't go into detail today, but we've, you know, created and in the process of creating a public health advisory committee to provide guidance to us in terms of reopening criteria. I've asked the Medical Society to identify a member to sit on that board so there'll be a dedicated position to represent all of the physicians and clinicians in the county so that we're, you know, taking those types of issues into consideration as we reopen and think about how we can partner to get that messaging out.
Great. Thank you. Mr. President, that was five minutes.
Right on target, right on target. And Councilmember Glaz.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, gentlemen, for the update. You know, as we were talking, you know, there was breaking news out of the District of Columbia with Mayor Bowser and her team announcing a four-point plan to reopen once all of the data and metrics lead them into that direction. So I appreciate the questions from my colleagues about what we're doing here towards that. But I just want to take the remaining four minutes and 30 seconds to ask you about nursing homes and assisted living facilities. You know, there have been some significant increases in deaths and cases in nursing homes. And for example, there was one that had a 58 case increase, an increase in 58 cases from last week. And now that we've been providing more data to the public, it has been shared with me, at least the concern that the increased number of people with COVID-19 here in the county is largely coming from those assisted living facilities and nursing homes. Can you talk about that a little bit, perception versus reality?
Well, as, you know, we've talked about before, you know, we're working hard to mitigate those transmissions in the nursing homes, you know, from our local teams, the state teams, and now with the National Guard teams coming in. I know that there was a reference or a request to break down the cases by nursing homes. We're looking at our new cases by nursing homes and non-congregate settings. I do know that some other jurisdictions are doing that in terms of how the numbers are presented. I can have Dr. Liu look into that. I know, you know, for new cases as well as looking at the fatalities. Because that, you know, and if looking at it differently may give us reason to say, you know, the new cases being transmitted actually are smaller in a community transmission session, setting versus a congregate living space.
Right, because as, as more people are monitoring the situation, especially because of the dashboard is now live, they're concerned that the, the community at large is not able to start the recovery because of the increases which are largely confined to these facilities. Again, that is a thought that has been shared with me. So a follow-up question would be then, if we don't break the data down that way, but some are either interpreting it that way or have some other means to delineate it, does that mean that as we continue working with our, within the community to provide PPE or other resources, we need to send more to these facilities so that we can really clamp down on the spread where we know it exists?
So another piece, I guess I have an exception, but the first piece I think folks also need to understand is that there has been a significant concerted effort to do universal testing in nursing homes. So it shouldn't surprise folks that a high percentage of the new cases coming up may be in those nursing home settings because we've prioritized getting everybody tested in those spaces. And hopefully very soon, we'll be able to prioritize getting the general public so that denominator will increase and it won't look so, you know, that it's so solely on the nursing home. But to your question, certainly, we, it's, you know, when I think of things that keep me up in terms of COVID-19 related things, the nursing homes are one of them and assisted living facilities. And so, you know, we've got the combination of the different teams going in. As I mentioned, the National Guard teams will have gone into 25 of those homes as of Monday. Our local team is working particularly with those facilities that have had the highest numbers, are in contact on a daily basis with them. We've had additional folks come in and do site visits from the state level. So yes, we are putting out PPE, we're putting out guidance, we're making sure they're doing what they're supposed to do to mitigate any further transmission. Because obviously, none of us want to see any situation where we have one case period in a nursing home. But certainly, as you mentioned, we don't want to see an uptick or spike that you referenced in your earlier question.
And I'd like to add to that really quickly, it's such an important point. The people in the nursing home aren't going to beach week. They're not catching it outside the facility. So it's being brought in and it's being brought in because of community transmission coming into the facility. So if we have more community transmission because we open a lot of things up and we're not ready to, obviously, we create greater risk for those people who are most vulnerable. And so I think a lot of the argument that I've seen in the, certainly the online discourse is, oh, this is a nursing home problem, let the rest of us go frolic freely. But again, the people frolicking freely are driving part of the problem in the nursing home. And so you cannot just disconnect those two things and be so discompassionate. I'm not suggesting, clearly I'm not suggesting you are, but I just want to be clear that, you know, we have to protect both people, the people living in our nursing homes who are loved ones, with the general public and the economic impacts that we're causing because of this. And so I think with broader testing and more testing capability, and I think we would not move forward without more testing capability, I think that's pretty clear. And we're very close on that. But as we ramp up testing activity, I think Dr. Yost is totally right. You're going to see more cases in the public that are helping to drive what we're seeing because we're looking harder in our nursing homes.
Let me just close by saying, Dr. Stoddard, I appreciate you separating my personal opinion from the questions I'm asking so that the public can better understand. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do think as for the nursing home idea, you know, and certainly the people living in the nursing homes do not necessarily go out into the public that often, but the people working in the nursing homes do. And so that's something that we always have to keep in mind. Councilmember Fritzen.
Good, Council President. First of all, thank you to both of you, as has been said. Really appreciate all of your work, which has been around the clock and I really appreciate that. I also want to thank the entire executive branch for stepping up with the dashboard as was presented yesterday. There was responsiveness to concerns that council members had and I think that represents a real step in the right direction. There's still some improvements that I know that you all are working on and that we are pushing for, but it's a real positive development in terms of transparent, accountable, measurable data for residents to understand what we're talking about, why we're making the decisions we're making. And I've been pushing for it, colleagues have been pushing for it. And I think we all appreciate that. I think it was really positive developments. I want to start with that. Could you explain, because you just hit on it quite a bit in terms of the positive cases in nursing homes partially being a function of the fact that we've increased testing. This is a broader issue, but it raises the question of why positive cases are a data point that we're focusing so much on and making decisions on. Could you explain why we're using positive cases? It hasn't seemed like the governor and the state has used positive cases as part of their data. Could you explain that, please?
Sure. I can't explain that what the metrics are, what are being used by the governor. But, you know, in relation to us, I think it's, again, we're not focusing on one specific indicator. It's the whole concept of the story. And so I think it is important to look at the number of new cases coming up because that's an early indicator of how is the disease spreading within, in society? There are some more, you know, sophisticated epidemiologic measures such as your R not, which is the rate of reproduction of the virus. That's defined as for each person who is positive, what is the turnover? How many people is that person infecting? And so we want to see that number below zero. So we've tried to create some more simplistic measures for folks to be able to follow and understand while we look at some of those more complex measures behind the scenes. So again, I think looking at the number of new cases is an indicator, it's important because you're looking at how many folks are coming into contact with others. You're getting a sense of how many people you need to be isolated to interrupt those networks of transmission. But we don't look at it in a vacuum. You know, we look at it in the context of, are we doing focused testing? Are we doing targeted testing? Are we doing large-scale testing and not one, you know, a specific category of folks? And, you know, in addition to that, looking at it in the context of how many folks we can test, how many folks are in the hospital. So it's a complete picture and not just one measure.
I appreciate that. What is our reproduction number, the R not number currently?
So currently, actually, Dr. Liu is working on that today. I can get that to you this afternoon. Back in April, we worked with our colleagues at University of Maryland. I think it was in 1.42, but that was in April. in 1.42, but that was in April. Certainly, we'd like to see it be down somewhere. The goal is to have the R not below one. But as I said, he's working on it now, we'll get an estimate to you all this afternoon.
That would be great, and if you could let us know how frequently you're looking at that data to update it, I think that would really be helpful. You know, it does beg the question, is we use positive cases of how helpful it really is? If we don't know what it is based off of, what the denominator is, as we're ramping up testing, if we're not sharing the testing numbers, both in the private and the public sector, then it seems to me that the positive case is not really a terribly helpful data point. So I just think it's something that we have to consider because we don't really know what is the difference between the new cases and what is as a result of increased, you know, increased infections, excuse me, or increased number of infected, excuse me, increased infections or increased testing? You know, it took me a minute to get that out, and you can see how confused I am by this data point because I can't even barely mention it. Okay, so in terms of the testing capacity, which is one of the criteria that you've set forth, do we have that we're able to share of how close we are to that 50 to 55,000 testing capacity? Is that something that can be shared as part of the daily data that is shared with the public?
Sure, from my understanding, I think there is a list of those qualitative ones. They've got red light, green light, yellow light on there. And so that's updated on a daily basis. And I think, you know, once we can get our, the ink dries on the contracts with the high throughput option, you know, we will have met the criteria, be very close to the criteria to be able to offer that capacity.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. And then just final question. It's clear that not all tests are created equally, that some are quality tests and some, you know, have false positives and false negatives. Are we looking at the types of tests that we're using and not just the number of tests that we're using?
Yeah, so that goes into, you know, looking through all these different test modalities and mechanisms, is thinking which, you know, which is the best one. And that has, part of that has been challenging because the FDA has expedited review of a lot of these. You know, historically, tests will go through a very long validation process. We don't have the luxury of having that, and the validation studies are limited to, you know, to a couple of hundred samples at most. So we're working as best as we can to get as much information as we can to make sure that we're pulling the trigger using the right one.
Thank you. Councilmember Reamer.
I have to go. Thank you so much. I have to say, I am, I'm feeling very dissatisfied. You know, for weeks now, we've been hearing about discussions of expanded testing and new vendors and new sites. And then at each of these meetings, you know, we're almost there, always almost there. We're waiting on a contract, we're waiting on something. And this is an emergency, it's a critical public health emergency. So what do we need to do to ensure that the next time we meet, the only response is that these problems are solved?
I share your sense of urgency. All I can say, I know that the contract team is working to solidify those details. What I can tell you from the health perspective, we have our plans ready to go, we've done our due diligence and meeting with the partners so that we'll be able to roll out our testing strategy, which I've shared with you, as soon as they become available.
Okay, well, a related concern. I heard your comment that the first wave of deployment of testing capacity would be with public safety officers, and I want them to be in the first wave, but I'm concerned that that could mean it would be several more weeks before additional testing is deployed in those specific, really hotspot areas. Why aren't we having a parallel deployment of the first wave of testing through partners in our, for example, Montgomery Cares clinics at the same time as we're deploying our new capacity with our own internal employees?
Sure, that's an excellent question and actually highlights the work we've been doing in terms of creating our buffet of testing options. So as it relates specifically to the high-throughput testing opportunity, there is limited capacity as the lab builds up capacity, so those specific samples are focused on that one population. But as you know, we're continuing to continue.
I understand what you said, so this, can you say that again, just which population did you mean?
Sure, so the population you referenced in terms of our first wave, we have, with that high-throughput option, we have X amount of kits. I think we've got 10,000 kits that we have. So for that particular purpose, we're using that for those first-line responders to support completing the universal testing in nursing home settings to do that. And so we've, the numbers match up, so we're using that for that. Now, we're continuing to do our other test strategies that we put into place. So the alternative test sites will continue. We're creating, again, working to create the mobile testing arm to support and do the ready responder testing. That will work with our current supply, using nasopharyngeal swabs to execute that. We have met, our team, our Montgomery Cares team actually met last week with the clinics to do, and they're completing an assessment of their ability to partner in that. I know that there was a meeting earlier this week, actually, with some community folks to talk about in some of those hotspot areas that you referenced, identifying those and being able to partner to do testing with the county providing some testing apparatus, also having social support services there to link people to. And then bringing on, for example, that particular activity that I'm referencing would involve one of the Montgomery Cares clinics to do some follow-up medical care there. So I think, you know, your suggestion and recommendation of how to continue those partnerships is important. We're working to do that and leveraging those partnerships. But I do want to make sure that just because we have that one testing option that may focus on one particular set of folks in that phase, we're going to continue all of the other testing options that we have in place.
Thank you. Last question. Outdoor is clearly safer than indoor. Are you recommending that we can allow retail on the street, restaurants on the street in phase one? I don't, I don't know that that was covered in the governor's order, but if we could, can you just talk to us about our ability to differentiate here and allow, and have the county begin immediately moving to pave the way for outdoor commerce?
Well, I think, you know, thank you for the suggestion. I think, you know, consistent to the earlier conversation, you know, we're looking at a host of options, you know, we've, you know, I know the governor has his plan, the governor of Virginia has his plan. You know, we're going to look at, and you know, with you all's feedback and input, what activities can we do safely that we know will be low-risk, as particularly as we start to reopen whenever that happens, that won't cause a significant, or put us at risk of having an increase in terms of new cases? And I think that's something that we can consider and look into. I know that some jurisdictions have been doing, you know, curbside retail, and so, you know, that's something else to consider. Because again, we want to maximize opportunities for folks at home while maximizing and ensuring they're as safe as possible. So we look forward to that continued conversation.
Thank you.
And I'd like to add just really quickly to that. We're also looking at options like, for example, are there places where we could, you know, when we're ready to do outdoor patio restaurants, can we expand the patio space into potentially the public space by closing roads and other things like that, sidewalks? So we're looking at that as well, and that will be part of our package. Because obviously, when we're ready to open, we want to, we want to synergize the efforts between protecting public health and maximizing the economic opportunity to the restaurants and whomever we're opening for. So we're looking at those things simultaneously.
Thank you, Vice President Hucker.
I do actually have to step out, sir.
Okay, thank you. Vice President Hucker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you both for all your hard work and dedication. It's great news about the dashboard, that's a big step in the right direction. Appreciate the questions from Councilmember Albernoff about the physician practices. I've been in touch with some of those as well. That's going to have a big implication for our county and for the state budget as well. So I look forward to, you know, more work on that. And great news about the FEMA reimbursements. My colleagues had a lot of good questions. Let me pass on one scenario I heard yesterday from a constituent, because I bet we all have constituents in this boat. Constituent has a daughter, works at a restaurant. The restaurant, she, her job is packaging up orders and taking them out curbside to delivery drivers and to customers. A coworker of hers tests positive for COVID, and the employer understandably doesn't want to identify which worker that is. She knows she's been exposed to that worker in a relatively small restaurant, 10 people or so, for, you know, presumably for multiple days. A, I guess she should go get tested. B, how do we make contact tracing work if the restaurant owner doesn't disclose, are they compelled to disclose to the government, contract tracer, who the individual is? And three, what, given that most of the workers there are, are being told they have to go to work, they can't self-quarantine, many are undocumented and don't want to go get tested at a government facility and want to just go to work and cross their fingers. Have we ever considered setting up a testing location with one of our nonprofit partners like CASA or IDENTITY at a location that undocumented workers might feel more comfortable going to than a state emissions testing facility or a county government building?
So I know Dr. Gels had to jump, but I think I can actually answer most of your questions. So, yes, I would recommend that that woman go and talk to her primary care provider and suggest testing. I think that would be totally appropriate. If she does not have a primary care provider, she can certainly reach out to the disease control line and they can act as a surrogate for it and get her, get her tested for that specific person. Now, the answer to the other questions about other testing opportunities involving some of our nonprofits, yes. I think actually, part of the, part of the groups that we're working on planning right now, and I know we've talked to Impact already, for example, is looking at, looking at our nonprofits as a delivery mechanism for our test kits, even our high-throughput testing kits. And so we're in the process of planning now. I know that there was a number of meetings with Impact and Delegate Turcudian on this very issue in the Long Branch area to talk about, and this would be applied across the county as well, about giving endpoint service-delivering nonprofits access to our kits, have them collect the samples because they have the relationships that are already built on the ground, and then bring them back to us, and we'll have the high-throughput testing vendor run the tests. And so I would expect actually that, you know, that will scale up just as everything else scales up, but I would actually expect that we'll be utilizing some of our early high-throughput collection kits, including potentially the first week high-throughput collection kits, in some number to do some of those things as well. And so, and that will expand in weeks thereafter as we have access to more testing.
Sorry, how soon do you think? That's great news. How soon do you think you could stand that up?
So, I mean, I've been promising that we've been signing this contract, and the lawyers have been involved, and they are, you know, looking after their, the company and the county's best interest, and, you know, it's frustrating for us, too. I think we could talk about it, you know, I know that I've got another letter coming to you all, I think to, Councilmember Reamer had sent a request for some additional planning, and I think you'll see that that would be reflected in our second round of testing. So the first round would be, if the test kits, you know, let's type, I won't sort out the balance, but let's just say that we signed the contract today, we'd get 10,000 kits tomorrow. The first round, we've talked about, I think, through the nursing homes, correctional facilities, and our first responders. The second round of kits next week, we would not have to repeat all of those pools that we've already tested, we'd expand it out to include some of our mobile testing arms, but also, I think, we've talked, and I think I know specifically that probably I'll have talked to a number of nonprofits about taking some number of those kits immediately and start doing community-based testing.
Great, terrific, thanks. That's it for me. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Navarro, ask for another round, please.
Yes, I'll be brief, following up on that last actual question. As the announcement has been made by the state utilizing CVS as another site, other sites to provide testing, the ones that have been assigned from Montgomery County, none of those zip codes actually are aligned with the zip codes that we've been tracking as the high case zip code. So they've identified 20814, 20852, and 20870 as sites for Montgomery County. So as we move hopefully expeditiously to get through the high-throughput testing, I would urge us to ensure that we are focusing on the 20902, 20904, 20906, because obviously we need to ensure that we're, you know, present in those particular zip codes. It's disappointing that the state would choose as priorities only these particular zip codes, because obviously, we're trying to get as much capacity as we can. But I think aligned with everything that we've said, let's make sure that we're targeting then whatever extra capacity for testing we could find. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Stoddard, for being with us today. And Dr. Gels, we will tell him the next time we see him, thank him for being here. We sincerely appreciate the updates. And for my, for the council colleagues and for the public, please remember, we're going to go on recess right now. We will be back at 2:30, 2:30 for an update from the briefing from the Maryland Department of Transportation on the status of the Purple Line construction. They've told us that they have a hard stop at 3:30. So please be back at 2:30 so we can start on time, because I have a feeling they're going to leave on time. Thank you very much. We'll see everybody back at 2:30. Secretary Slater, thank you for being with us, and Mr. Quinn and Chris Conklin from Montgomery County DOT. We understand that, Greg, Harry, you know, you can actually see.
I do, thank you.
Good, good. We understand that you all have a hard stop at 3:30, and if that's correct, we're going to certainly honor that, and we're going to begin just as soon as you would, as you would like to begin, please.
Absolutely, I can, I can begin anytime, just once. First, thank you for having us, and thank you for working with us on the schedule with Glenn. I know we've been, our demands are across the board right now, as I'm sure many of yours are, but Kevin and I are doing daily negotiations on the Purple Line and daily discussions on the Purple Line, and that's where we have to go right after this. So let me take a few minutes, and then I'll hand it over to Kevin, and he can kind of add some of his discussion as well. But good afternoon, for the record. My name is Greg Slater, Secretary, Maryland Department of Transportation. With me today, I have Kevin Quinn, who is our administrator for MTA. I'd like to take a few minutes, update the council on where we stand in terms of our outstanding claims and change orders submitted by PLTP, the notice of termination followed by PLTC. And then Kevin can provide an update on construction to kind of show you how things are progressing. I think it would be help, it would help to first review exactly who's involved in the construction of the Purple Line. The state has a contractual relationship through a public-private partnership agreement with Purple Line Transit Partners, that's PLTP, under which PLTP is to design, build, finance, operate, and maintain the Purple Line over a period of 36 years. PLTP, in turn, has subcontracted with the Purple Line Transit Constructors, PLTC, to design and construct the project, and PLTO, which is Purple Line Transit Operators, to operate and maintain the Purple Line once we're able to really enjoy it. I think we're all familiar with the lawsuit that we all worked through, which resulted in a revocation of the Federal Transit Administration's Record of Decision for the project for nearly a year. The impact of that decision was the basis for a delay claim submitted to PLTP. The disagreement centered around which party is responsible for the impacts to the project and the parties. There are four matters noted in PLTC's notice, which are in varying stages of the processes outlined in our P3 agreement. Two of these matters involve dispute claims that we have been in settlement negotiations that were started about a year ago by my predecessor. One of the previously mentioned delay claims associated with a lawsuit that vacated the Record of Decision. The other is the claim on property acquisitions that does intertwine with the vacation of the Record of Decision, because you can't get to those properties on those federal projects without that Record of Decision. We are committed, Kevin and I are in discussions daily, to continuing settlement negotiations while we work through the official dispute resolution processes in the contract. So we're talking about our settlement and working through the processes at the same time. The other matters involve CSX and MDE issues. There are more recent issues that are in the early stages of our process that really started to come out over the last year, but recently pushed forward. Based on the information we have at this time, we're working through with the parties and discussing that information. We still do need more information. All four of these claims have been subject of a very focused settlement discussion that began, of course, with my predecessor and are ongoing today. You know, I can't really talk too much about the details or the merits of the claim or comment on specific details. or, or comment on specific details, uh, because I actually have personally a, uh, a role in the dispute resolution process, uh, towards the end. So in the official process, uh, I, I have to kind of somewhat stay neutral and talk through those, uh, until we get there. I'm personally committed to finding a mutually agreeable outcome. It's important that whatever we agree on is, is in the best interest of the state and, and its taxpayers, short term and long term. Uh, I think it's important that I talk about kind of where our head is in terms of these negotiations. One is, you know, what does the contract say, uh, for issues like this? Two is, uh, you know, how do we work together on, on finding a successful path for the project? And, and three, what's the successful path? How do we solve the successful issue, uh, the issue that we're facing today and make sure we're not back here, uh, in six months or a year? So we want to make sure that, uh, we work through the process, but also, uh, build some relationships so that we, uh, can have a successful project, uh, moving forward after this one. Uh, but it is important to remember the relationships here and how the project is structured. It's a P three agreement that includes a, a number of important protections for the state and we're working through all of those. Uh, at this point, I can't really talk about the intentions of PLTC, uh, and, and where they are, uh, but I can tell you that my intention is to continue to proceed, uh, with the process laid out in the contract and continue to work on settlement negotiations on a daily basis, sometimes, uh, multiple times a day. Uh, I'll note that, uh, in closing, before I turn it over to Kevin, uh, that construction on the project has not been interrupted. PLTP has upheld its responsibility under the contract to ensure, uh, that everyone remains on the job and both sides remain committed to completing the project, uh, as soon as possible. Uh, I will add, uh, before I turn it over to Kevin, that I can tell you that there are conversations daily, there are multiple conversations on some days and, and they're very productive, really, really good discussions, uh, about how we navigate through these, uh, challenges and make it successful for everyone. So at this point, I'll turn it over to MTA Administrator Quinn, who can provide an update on kind of where things are in, in terms of construction and then, uh, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Mr. Quinn, please.
Sure. Um, I'm going to attempt, attempt the technical marvel here of trying to share my screen, which I think whenever this happens effectively, we all feel a tremendous sense of accomplishment. So let me, let me see if I can do that. Can you all see that?
You did it, you did it.
The miracle. All right, great. Um, well, uh, first, you know, again, uh, uh, I do want to thank you, uh, for inviting us to brief you here today. It's a, it's a fantastic project and as you can see by a lot of the ongoing activity on the corridor, um, we're taking advantage of the fewer motor vehicles and, and fewer pedestrians, uh, out on the road. Uh, with that in mind, work has really continued to move forward at a pretty brisk pace, um, with additional safety measures in place, uh, to keep our staff and the public safe, of course, during, uh, this COVID nineteen. So I, I want to talk about, uh, before I kind of get into, just some of the safety measures that we have put in place. So, you know, in daily briefings, uh, workers on the project have been reminded to maintain social distancing really as much as possible. Um, they've been equipped, uh, with and required to wear full of PPE, including gloves, protect eyewear and face masks. Um, our staff have received, uh, detailed instructions on how to wear and take care of homemade face coverings. Um, our field staff is carrying hand sanitizer, a PLTC has added additional hand washing stations across the alignment and, uh, and, and we're really taking that, uh, that seriously. We're all in discussions about these days, how to keep everybody safe, uh, during this time. Uh, and so that said, you know, I'm, I'm really happy to report construction's about thirty percent complete and advancing at a, at a pretty rapid pace. So just, uh, I, I want to give kind of a, a highlight reel of, uh, going from, uh, west to east across the alignment of, of some of the good work that's going on. Um, so starting in Bethesda, uh, you know, the terminus of the light rail line, uh, we're really seeing that retaining wall and foundation work on, uh, Pearl Street, the Georgetown Branch Trail and, and Sleeford Road has been ongoing. Um, at the Bethesda Metro Station, uh, south entrance, the shaft, uh, formwork continues to be placed in preparation for concrete lining that will be poured in the upcoming months. Because you can see just a tremendous amount of work going on, uh, going on there. Driving down Connecticut Avenue, uh, you'll see construction of the abutments for the Connecticut Avenue, uh, overpass and the, uh, Capo Crescent Trail. Uh, we're looking at girder installation plan for this summer, uh, now that will require some temporary short-term traffic stoppages, uh, and some lane closures, uh, and as always, we'll closely coordinate that with, uh, Montgomery County and with M dot S H A. Girders, uh, have also been set at Chevy Chase Lake Drive, uh, bridges there and the deck for the CCT bridge is actually being constructed, uh, as we speak. So some good work, uh, going on there. Uh, and, uh, the excavation for the Jones Mill Road Underpass has reached its final depth of thirty-five feet and PLTC is in the process of building the, uh, substructure for the, uh, uh, light rail line and the CCT underpasses and will begin setting the precast arches, uh, late this spring or early summer. Uh, and also, uh, uh, girders have been set for the new Rock Creek Bridge that the Purple Line will travel on. Uh, this is a one hundred ninety-three foot parabolic tub girder bridge. I wanted to be sure I nailed that, uh, which is about fifty feet, uh, above the creek and these girders are, uh, are huge. Uh, construction of the CCT abutments will occur over the next six months as well as completion, uh, of the creek restoration. Continuing to move east across the alignments, uh, over to Littensville. Uh, in Littensville, we've continued utility work and retaining wall installation around the Littensville Place Bridge for preparation of station construction. Uh, construction, uh, also, uh, construction of the Talbot Avenue Bridge has also continued. Uh, as you probably know, we're replacing that historic structure with a wider venue that will accommodate more cars, bikes, pedestrians, uh, and the CCT. A pile driving for that bridge was completed during winter break. Installation for the foundation substructure of that bridge is ongoing right now and we expect construction, uh, of that bridge to be complete by the end of this year. From Sixteenth Street, uh, to Spring Street, tree clearing has been completed and installation of sheet pile, uh, for a crash wall there began in May. Demolition of the existing Spring Street Bridge is scheduled for fall twenty twenty with construction lasting there, uh, about seven months. I want to, uh, move to Silver Spring where there's just a, a tremendous amount of work and I hope these photos really convey, uh, the work that's been going on. But, you know, in Silver Spring, really home of the region's largest transit hub, uh, the bridge girders were erected across the Metro Red Line and, and CSX tracks, that's a span of about two hundred eighty feet, uh, another span of about two hundred sixty feet across Colesville Road, uh, in early twenty twenty. And if you want, you can catch a video actually of the construction sequences and the way that we did it on our social media pages, uh, at, uh, Purple Line MD. And there you can also see installation of part of the Trest Bridge that will support the CCT over Colesville Road. Uh, three spans have been installed and the fourth will be installed later, uh, during construction of the new Purple Line Station mezzanine. And ultimately the CCT will really connect to the Metropolitan Branch Trail. Uh, that's a, a really critical connection and, and we're excited about that. Um, the huge amount of work that's taking place, uh, all around the Silver Spring Transit Center, as you know, required multiple evening, uh, and weekend closures, uh, of Colesville Road and the temporary shift of bus stops from, uh, the Silver Spring Transit Center to about a block up, uh, on Colesville Road. And I, I want to thank you all for the, uh, coordination. There's a lot of coordination, uh, with many agencies and local stakeholders to be sure that commuters were really ready, uh, for those changes. Uh, on May second, uh, Colesville Road reopened at full capacity. We're really excited about that. I know folks were excited about that and bus service resumed in the lower level, um, of the Transit Center. Deck work has also begun and, and you're going to see that continuing for several months on the LRV elevated track there. And, uh, following completion of piers, uh, in that green space right in front of the Transit Center, uh, additional girders, uh, will be placed, uh, on the, uh, Level Two entrance, uh, this summer. And that'll bring the total elevated track length in that area to a little over eleven hundred feet. Bonifent Street in that area, also Bonifent Street West was closed, uh, May eleventh between Ripley and Georgia Avenue for utility relocations. Uh, there's a detour that's in place for motor vehicles and local access is being maintained for pedestrians and vehicular traffic to, uh, parking garages and the surrounding buildings, uh, in that area. On, uh, Wayne Avenue, uh, we've continued overhead and underground utility relocation work between Fenton Street and Manchester Place. Uh, PLTC is conducting individual outreach to homeowners on potential, uh, impacts they may see during this work. Uh, upcoming work in this area includes a maintenance of traffic shift from Dale Drive over to the Plymouth Tunnel, for which will widen, uh, the roadway and shift traffic to the westbound side of, uh, of Wayne Avenue. And, uh, reconstruction of the Wayne Avenue Bridge across Lilo Creek will be completed in two phases and traffic shifts, uh, will occur to accommodate that work, uh, with two phases, the first in summer of twenty twenty and fall of, uh, uh, through fall of twenty twenty when phase two will be implemented. And I, you know, just want to remind everybody, you know, that, uh, Silver Spring Metro Station that, uh, is elevated, you know, it's adjacent to the top level of the, uh, the, uh, Falls Arvines Transit Center that's there and features side platforms, uh, provides access to the Womata, uh, Red Line Metro Station and, and, uh, elevators, uh, to and from the ground level in Colesville Road here. Shifting over to Long Branch, um, uh, concrete work for the construction of the Manchester Place, uh, Station, the Western Portal has continued. Uh, during Phase One, uh, the Kenwood House Parking Lot, uh, that you see there was temporarily relocated, but we expect that to be restored by late, uh, summer of twenty twenty. Uh, Phase Two will begin with demolition of the temporary Kenwood House Parking Lot, uh, complete the construction work, uh, the concrete work for the Manchester Place Station by January of twenty twenty-one. And inside the, uh, the tunnel, uh, uh, we're starting to see waterproofing and the final lighting, lining to be completed, uh, construction of the, uh, safety and emergency walkway will, will soon begin there. Uh, the tunnel's eastern portal will soon be brought to grade at Arla Street and, uh, demobilization of the tunnel plant and excavation equipment will proceed at that time. Um, uh, utility relocations will continue on Piney Branch Road, uh, where retaining wall work, uh, will begin in the next six months. Uh, and Arla Street from Flower Avenue to Piney Branch will be closed to all the local traffic for about eighteen months for installation of track and construction of the Piney Branch Road Station, uh, beginning late this summer. Uh, and lastly, just want to touch on some work on University. Um, University Boulevard, as you, I'm sure well know, remains very busy with overhead and underground utility relocations and stormwater drainage systems. Uh, some of that roadway work includes a widening, grading, concrete, uh, curb and sidewalk reconstruction. Um, and in the next six months, uh, you're going to start seeing some new temporary traffic signals along University Boulevard at multiple locations, uh, including Seek Lane where, uh, unfortunately, as you, uh, probably remember well, we had a pedestrian fatality back in October, uh, twenty nineteen. And, uh, you know, I, in talking to project staff, you know, we've, uh, that was a real wake-up call and, and I think, um, we have, uh, done a lot, uh, since then in, in working with local elected officials. Uh, we went out and did a tour, uh, with our project, uh, managers, uh, M dot S H A, local officials to review that area. We've installed additional barriers in the area to prevent mid-block crossings. Um, we, uh, move forward with hiring a full-time maintenance of traffic manager to oversee access really throughout the entire corridor. Uh, and, you know, I just want to, uh, again, convey that safety is absolutely the number one priority for us on this project. Couple other photos, uh, here's one of just the gas main relocation on University Boulevard and, uh, what the Tacoma Langley Station, uh, is going to look like, uh, which features a center platform and university, uh, adjacent to the Tacoma Langley Transit Center, uh, connecting riders, uh, to the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Transit Center, uh, which is the largest non-metro rail station transfer point in the region. Um, so, you, you know, uh, as you've heard, you know, we've absolutely been, uh, engaged in completing this project and we have every confidence that we're going to be producing here, a, a, a light rail system that's going to meet the high standards, uh, of, uh, MTA, of the citizens of Maryland, of Montgomery County. Uh, as the secretary has noted, construction has up, absolutely not been interrupted throughout this process and, uh, we, uh, continue to remain committed to this and, and committed to, uh, ongoing negotiations, uh, with PLTP. Uh, with that, I'll turn it back over to, uh, uh, the council and secretary. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Quinn. Mr. Slater, did you have anything else to add or? No, Mr. Slater, did you have anything else to add?
Sorry, I'm talking to myself in mute. I'm doing that a lot these days. Uh, no, just, I will add and reiterate that, that both Kevin and I personally and this whole department, uh, is committed to resolving these issues and, and delivering the Purple Line for the citizens of Maryland.
Thank you. And I'm going to ask, uh, Mr. Conklin, if he has anything to add, if he can take himself off of mute. But Mr. Slater or Mr. Quinn, are we, are we on schedule? Will this be still on the same schedule that, I know it's ongoing, but is it on the same schedule?
Go ahead, Kevin. I don't have that in front of me.
You're on, yeah, there you go.
There we go. Yeah, sorry, took me a second there. Yeah, so, you know, our, our goal remains to open the Purple Line in two phases with, uh, Phase One by December of twenty twenty-two, that's, uh, six stations between New Carrollton to College Park. Uh, Phase Two, uh, would open by mid twenty twenty-three. That's the remaining fifteen stations, uh, in full service, uh, in Montgomery County.
Thank you. Mr. Conklin, did you have anything to add?
Uh, just a couple of things. I mean, the primary concerns that we have as a department are making sure that the construction, uh, continues to progress and that the open sites don't become inactive open sites in the county. Um, our colleagues, uh, MTA have been good at communicating to us their desire to get these negotiations finished and we obviously share their concerns about impacts to taxpayers, both for the state and the county in terms of any additional costs that may or may not be warranted, um, because of the earlier, uh, issues with the project, the lawsuit and other things. So, um, beyond that, I don't really have a lot to add. Obviously, MTA and, and the secretary are in the driver's seat, uh, representing the work that's part of the county-funded projects that's in here, uh, that they're implementing, uh, through the agreement we have with MDOT. And, um, we, we hope that they can reach a resolution quickly. With that, I'll leave the rest of the time for council members to ask their questions.
Thank you very much. I'm going to turn to Council Vice President Hucker, the Chair of the, uh, the Transportation and Environment Committee. Just for my colleagues, I, I am going to try to keep it to the five-minute rule though. Right now, we only have the three council members who want to speak, Councilmember Hucker, Councilmember Glass and Councilmember Reamer. If that's the case, we can relax that rule, but we are going to honor the three thirty cutoff time for, uh, for, for the, uh, for the state. We're most appreciative that they're here. And with that, Council Vice President Hucker.
Thank you, Greg and, um, and Kevin for, for being here. Um, we, we all greatly appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. President. I, I guess I'm glad to hear of, uh, your, the confidence you both expressed that this project is going to stay on track. I, I heard more about the confidence to ongoing negotiation than to, than to, than to avoiding any future delays. I, I should say, I guess at the onset, I was very concerned about, um, both that the breakdown in the negotiations between PLTC and PLTP had reached such a dramatic point and it was, uh, you know, distressing and it felt unprofessional to find out about it from, uh, reporters, uh, rather than from you all. Um, and, you know, I talked to Mr. Conklin that afternoon and it sounded like that was pretty close to his experience as well, um, and, uh, even staff at PL, you know, TC as well. So, um, I, I'm, I'm, I'm a little surprised that, that, uh, we, we hadn't heard about that, you know, from you and, and, uh, and been briefed before we got to that point. It would be, you know how important this project is to our whole region? You and we have all spent a huge amount of time on it. Um, it would be appalling to see, uh, this, uh, get stalled this summer after three years of construction. We can't allow a sixteen-mile construction site to be stretched across, uh, Montgomery and Prince George's Counties. And, you know, an abandonment of a project like this would be unprecedented in our, in our county's history. Our constituents have already put up with years of inconvenience and they're really counting on this project, um, you know, to get, to get done on time. I'm glad to hear you're involved daily, Mr. Secretary. Um, can I ask, uh, and I'm, I'm sort of reluctant, I don't know whether I should ask all my questions at, at, uh, at once, Mr. President, uh, to get them in the five minutes because I think any of the answers could go over that. But, um, have you, have you, how many times, uh, Greg, have you met with them since May first, since that announcement? And how long are these meetings? Are these sort of daily five-minute check-ins or are you at the table working through this every day?
I mean, I, I'd have to actually go back and count all my calendar, how many.
Go ahead, in general, I'll take your word for it.
They vary, they vary. So, you know, sometimes, uh, they're just thirty minutes, hey, what has developed in the last twenty-four hours on your end, what has developed on the last twenty-four hours on our end? Sometimes there are longer conversations, uh, several hours where we work through details of particular issues so that we can understand them better. Uh, and then sometimes they're just kind of discussions on, on different parts of our contract, but also different parts of, of the claims, uh, in dispute. Now, you know, somewhat, I have somewhat of a position of, of advantage and disadvantage where I'm coming into this somewhat as a, as a fresh blank slate, kind of looking at things with a very open mind because my involvement is, is relatively new, uh, on this front. So, you know, I think it's, uh, I, I would classify the discussions as productive. Uh, one thing I'd ask you to clarify- One thing I'd ask you to clarify, you referenced that you said PLTC was, was caught off guard by this. Did you mean PLTP?
I, I think I meant PLTP. Sorry, when I talked to their government relations folks, they said they found out from the press release as well, which was quite a shock.
So we, we shared that experience as well?
Yeah.
So we were kind of working through.
Right. And how that's, I'm glad, I mean, I have great confidence in you and your ability to get this done. How involved has the governor been? And in particular, one of these four areas of dispute is really a dispute between MDOT and MDE. And I'm as committed to stormwater management as anybody. It was my stormwater management bill that the governor renamed the rain tax many years ago and helped to get elected on. So I, I, but this seems like an inter-agency set of issues that the governor in particular could work out, especially if Pond Code 378 wasn't even in existence at the time of the project setting date, as it says in our packet.
So I would, I would say that the code being in existence of the setting date is, we're still working, we don't have a lot of the detail to really evaluate that claim. So Kevin could maybe expand on that, but, you know, so recognizing that some of these issues are cross-department, the governor's office is actually kind of monitoring and tracking and checking in regularly because they want to see success on this project as well. And then I'm having ongoing dialogue with Secretary Grumbles and that entire MDE team as we're working together because the state is the state. And so we work through those issues as a team very openly.
Right. I just thank you. I appreciate that. This is the governor's marquee transit project. Infrastructure is the theme of his NGA presidency. If the largest transit P3 in the nation can't get completed on time under his leadership, I'm not sure how the Montgomery County public and the private investors that are watching this are going to have much confidence in the state's ability to deliver a much more, you know, complicated and larger P3 managed lanes project. So I really hope that he's, the governor's really personally involved. And, Mr. President, just one more question around federal involvement. Greg, have you looked into or considered refinancing the Purple Line's TIFI loan? Wouldn't that save potentially millions of dollars if that were refinanced? And have you involved the federal delegation? When I've spoken to Congressman Raskin's office and the Senator's office, they say they hadn't heard from MDOT or PLTP about resolving any of these disputes when it seems to me they'd be critical in helping to secure additional federal funding and into putting pressure on CSX to resolving this, that dispute.
So I think, I'll, I'll touch on it a few point in, in a few ways. One is, yes, we're talking to Build America Bureau and TIFI as a team, but the state and PLTP together about what opportunities we have to refinance TIFI. The interest rates are very good right now and certainly that could provide some advantages. And, and so where, where I would say where we differ is I'm not necessarily sure that, you know, extra funding that may or may not be warranted is the solution. We have to work through the merits of the claim, who's responsible, who's responsible for the risks and what the, what the exposure is on both sides and then work on, on the funding piece, you know? So I don't want to, I don't want to just get in a situation where we're just paying claims without understanding the merits of the claim and protecting the taxpayers.
I agree with that sequence, absolutely. I just, it seems like they're part of the solution and you would think you'd want to involve them. Mr. President, I yield back. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And if you want, I will put you back on the list if there's time. Councilmember Glass.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Secretary Slater and Mr. Quinn for, for joining us this afternoon. I do appreciate the briefing. I appreciate the photos and the graphics of, of the updates for things that have been done over the last six months or so, since, since at least the TNE Committee and now the full council have received an update. And I look forward to being the first in line to ride the Purple Line when it, when it opens. But with that said, when the Transportation and Environment Committee had a hearing back in March of 2019, I asked about the status of this project and was told that the Purple Line Transit Partners and the state were far apart on a settlement for cost overruns. In fact, I was actually told that the cost overruns were, quote, "far less" than what was being reported in the media, and that was $300 million last year. I asked the same question at a subsequent hearing that the committee had in September of 2019, which didn't generate a detailed response either. So here we are now in May of 2020, and I'll ask the question that I've asked twice before but have not received a sufficient response to. Is this project on budget?
Let me let Kevin answer that one in terms of, you know, I think we have to figure out where the claims are and those types of things. I think there are a variety of levels to that. And so one budget is, is kind of at the end, but you have to write in the middle of a project to compare where you are in terms of percentages of progress and where your budget is expended and those types of things. So let me ask kind of Kevin where to answer that one.
Yeah, I mean, so sitting here today, yes, I'd say it largely is. I think it's these claims that are outside and that's what's got to be resolved and that's what we're in the process of negotiating right now. I'm happy to get you more information on exactly how much has been billed and all of that, but as of right now, yeah, we're on track.
Okay, so, so you're saying we're on track, but the media reports that came out about three weeks ago said that we are approximately $519 million over budget. How do, how do you square those two thoughts?
So, so that's the total of claims that have been submitted by, by PLTP and that's what's in, certainly in dispute. And that's what we're in negotiations for right now.
Well, so, so the Purple Line Transit Partners, you know, have they been able to identify the root causes of any of these cost overruns? Is it regulatory hurdles? Is it construction costs, increased labor cost, a combination thereof?
Well, I think, I think, you know, what the secretary noted at the beginning, the, vacation of the rod at the beginning of this project caused an 11-month delay in the project. And so I think there are some delayed days and delayed costs that are associated with that. And that's a big subject of our ongoing negotiations is sort of the merits and the value of that.
Okay, well, Mr. Quinn, for you and for everybody else who's, who's paying attention, you know, Montgomery County has contributed approximately $225 million to the state to help build the Purple Line. $110 million to help build the South Entrance to the Bethesda Metro, $53 million in direct contribution for the construction, $2 million to help build a hiker biker trail in Silver Spring connecting downtown with Sligo Creek, and then approximately $61 million to help with the Capitol Crescent Trail excluding the tunnel, which the council, the county is now appropriated a little more than $50 million towards in our capital camp, in our capital fund. And so I, I share these details because Montgomery County taxpayers deserve to know how our funds are being used. And for the state to, what I think is withhold this information does, does a disservice. And, you know, it was only through my questions back in September of last year did we learn that the system was not going to open in a continuous track, that it was, through my probing, that we learned it was going to be opening in two segments with the Prince George's segment opening first. And so more broadly, this project was created as a public-private partnership. Unfortunately, I think the public is being left in the dark and what this partnership needs is oversight and accountability. And I think these conversations are really the only ones that are happening regarding this project. And when I keep asking questions, they're not being answered and we only get glimmers of information through the media, which are somewhat being countered now. So I, I'm at a loss to tell, to what to tell my constituents, an overwhelming majority of whom support the project, as do I, and we're excited about it. But they too are dismayed about the information they're hearing and the lack of transparency regarding the costs. And so at, at the end of the day, we need more accountability and oversight over this. And I'm still, this being the third conversation I've had as a council member, still not finding any of the answers adequate. So how, how do we get through this? When, when are we going to start having an open conversation about the, the hundreds of millions of dollars that taxpayers in Montgomery County and Maryland might be on the hook for?
So, Mr. Councilmember, let me, maybe I could follow up. I want to make sure I'm clear on exactly what information you're looking for that, that you're not getting. One of the things that Kevin and I are really focused on is in these ongoing settlement discussions, you have agreements and you have disagreements, but it's really important that you keep some level of confidentiality in those discussions so people can talk freely and we do that that way. When it comes to the rod and right of way, we have a much clearer picture. You know, we can, there's certainly some details that we can share about that if you're interested. I think a lot of that was kind of well-shared in terms of the amount of delay and the lawsuit that caused that. Frankly, that was nobody's fault. You know, that's not, and so we work through those issues. When it comes to the CSX and the MDE claims that we're working through, there's a, there's a variety of information under the partnership, under the P3 agreement, that, that PLTP is required to submit to us and its details so that we can analyze any potential claim and we can look through it and make sure and look at its merits and, and look at it from a variety of different perspectives. But maybe I'll ask Kevin to kind of share a little bit about where we are in those two claim processes, but to make sure, I don't know if we actually have all the information that you're looking for at this point, but I'd be happy to follow up if there's a detailed list.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, the, the key to us being able to be transparent, and we can certainly be more transparent, is, is having all the information at hand. And so, you know, as the secretary noted earlier, I think we were, we shared in your surprise at, you know, hearing in the Washington Post of, of the termination being filed for extended delay. That's not something that the state knew was going to happen ahead of time. We had been engaged in what we thought was productive negotiations up until that point. These two additional claims that have been submitted for both CSX and MDE-related issues, you know, the concessionaire has filed neither time impact analyses nor detailed cost estimates for both of those claims. And so that makes it tough for us to do a solid analysis on that and then to then convey that to you. But, you know, as it relates to transparency, you know, I, I think this is a good discussion and I think the secretary and I are certainly committed to more of these types of discussions to, to increase transparency.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the acknowledgement that more transparency is needed and Secretary Slater, I, I accept your offer to continue this conversation.
Sure. Thank you very much. Councilmember Reamer, we do have other people now on the list, so, and it's 3:14, almost 3:14. Councilmember Reamer. He, he was having issues, so we'll come back to him. Freezing issues again, I don't want to. Councilmember Fritzen. No, well, Hans is back. Hans, are you ready? Can you connect?
Could you please put me back in?
Yeah, you're, you're up now. Okay. Go ahead.
Look, can you go to the next speaker, please?
Okay, I'll go to the next speaker. Councilmember Fritzen.
From freezing to Fritzen, back to freezing to Fritzen again.
Yeah, that's right. You're using your time. Go ahead.
So, sounds good. First of all, you know, I, this is a tough conversation, obviously, the, the fact that we have to be talking about cost overruns and contractors walking away from deals and disputes between government agencies is really disappointing. We all agree and are committed to this project. It's about environmental sustainability, it's about economic development opportunity, it's about equity and access to public transportation and to job centers east and west, from Montgomery to Prince George's. And this is a critical project and one that is not just a county priority, a state priority and a regional priority, and we have to get it right. And I appreciate you being here, appreciate the work and the commitment that you all have put into this. And I just think that it's important that we move towards a resolution and we make sure that we move forward in a way that respects and appreciates the taxpayers who are on the hook for a chunk of this deal, a large portion of this deal, but that we actually get the project right so that it serves the purpose that it was intended to serve. Just quickly, could you reiterate the timeline of when we expect the project to be completed with specific dates and that this current issue that has been raised with the contractor walking away has not changed that from where it currently is, which, you know, has experienced some delays already?
Sure. So just to, sorry, our, our goal right now, our schedule that we're working on is a Phase One opening by December of 2022. So Phase One is six stations between New Carrollton and College Park.
How about Montgomery County?
And then Phase Two would be a full opening by mid of 2023. That's the remaining 15 stations with full service in Montgomery County.
Thank you. And then can I just confirm, we had a commitment previously, I just want to make sure we reiterated here, that the tunnel would be able to be open as soon as it's ready, would not have to wait, or excuse me, the trail would have to be open or would be able to be open, the Capitol Crescent Trail here would be able to be open when it is ready and safe and not necessarily when the light rail opens?
So I'm, I'm going to give you a tentative yes. I believe that's the case. I want to confirm that. That's a fantastic question and if I could follow up with you on that. But I remember having some discussions with my team about that the other day. I believe the answer is yes, but let me, let me follow up with you just to confirm that.
I'd appreciate that. It's a huge issue. That trail is ju, is just as important of a transportation infrastructure to the local community as the train itself is going to be for the broader community. And it's a really important aspect of this. You could follow up, that would be really helpful. And as mentioned before, this county has made significant commitments and we doubled down on those commitments as part of this current capo budget, as difficult as it was with the, the tunnel and fulfilling that at the later years of this project. I just wanted to confirm that none of the disputes that are occurring between government agencies and amongst members of the concessionaire, private sector portion of this public-private partnership would directly impact the county's investment or directly cause a additional amount of county funding to be required.
That, that is correct. We're working through those issues as a state. But I would, where I would put it, just something in there too, you issued disputes between state government agencies. We, we don't necessarily have disputes between two state government agencies. We have a dispute between a private sector entity and the state. So MDE and MDOT are working very closely together and, and trying to resolve the issues and trying to look at them from a variety of perspectives to make sure that whatever we do, if there's a process challenge, that we work on that today as well as making sure that we're not back here, but also that we're keeping the interests of the taxpayers at the forefront as well as the responsibilities under the contract in a public-private partnership. Because in a public-private partnership, there, as you know, there are certain risks on the private sector when they go after these types of jobs and there are certain risks on the state when they go after these jobs and, and we have to make sure it's, it's done as intended.
I appreciate that. I will rephrase the disputes between the concessionaire and the ongoing discussions between government agencies. It's a distinction without a ton of difference to me because it is part of, you know, the challenges for the project opening on time and some of that.
Absolutely. I just, I value my partnership with MDE a lot.
Well, I appreciate it and I just hope that we can move this project forward. As I said in the beginning, it is a critically important transportation, economic and equity issue for us here in this region and for the entire state. And I hope that we can all work together to be able to bring it to a resolution that doesn't cost the taxpayers additional funding.
Thank you. Councilmember Reamer.
Thank you so much. Just wanted to follow up, you know, elephant in the room, if you can't reach an agreement by June, you know, what happens then? And what is the significance of June? Do you, do, do both parties have to agree to extend that? You know, so what's the significance of June? Can it, will it extend beyond that or is June a hard date? And if so, what's, what happens? Is there a scenario where the state takes it over and builds it or is it automatically going to be rebid? What's the process to do that?
I think there, and, and I might ask Kevin to kind of weave in a little bit, but there are a variety of scenarios there that could take place. You know, I think we, we've looked at all of them and, and we've kind of put them all somewhat on the side burner because we all remain committed, PLTP and the state, into working out a resolution that we don't get to that point. But it's important to kind of reiterate that our contract is with PLTP, that the P3 concessionaire, and the dispute is actually with PLTC, who the state does not have a contract with. So that contract So that contract is with, between PLTP and PLTC. So it's PLTP, their responsibility to manage the design-build contract. So they don't work for us. The people that put the notice out, the group that put the notice out, they don't work for the state, they work for PLTP.
Does that imply that PLTP could solicit a new partner to continue working on it? Is that?
If they so choose that, yes.
And that's interesting. So your dispute is with PLTC. Tell me more about what that means, a distinction.
So there are three groups involved in the project. PLTP, which is Purple Line Transit Partners, they're the overarching private sector entity lead on the project. They have contracts with two other groups, PLTC, which is the design-build contractor, and PLTO, which is the operator maintenance group as the long-term operations. So in the dispute is actually a file of notice by PLTC to PLTP, not to the state. So we have a contract with PLTP who's responsible for design-build all, so they're working, the dispute is actually between PLTP and PLTC.
That's why you said you were a broker in this context.
Yes.
I was trying to understand that. I couldn't quite grasp that. Okay.
We just, we just all want to come together and make the project successful and get it out there for our citizens. So, you know, it's with, it's almost regardless of whose contractual relationship it is, it's just everybody coming together to try and solve the challenges.
Thank you. And is there any, you know, public transportation right now is taking a hit, you know, we have distancing issues. Of course, that's going to be resolved, this immediate issue will be resolved by the time the Purple Line opens. Is that a non-factor as far as long-term projections or any of this? It's not, it's not part of this?
I sure hope so. You know, I think, you know, I sure hope we're out of this crisis by then, and, you know, Kevin and I are working really hard on all of the transit systems across the state, whether it's Mark or commuter bus, or whether it's our bus system in Baltimore City, or we're working to make sure that when, when society is ready to come back and when it's safe to do so from the health experts, that we have a transit system that's ready to respond to that. And so looking at kind of programming and making sure that at first and foremost, people can social distance on our transit vehicles, that we're cleaning and we're visibly making sure that they're safe to do so. Our operators are safe and they can make sure they work in a safe environment. It's just critical that we think about it that way, you know, but we really want to make sure that that environment is safe for all of us and our partners at Womata as well.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Appreciate you being here today.
Thank you. We're, we are now at 3:23. Next speaker is Councilmember Auburnaz. We have Councilmember Juando following him, and we promised Vice President Hucker one minute of a follow-up at the end. Councilmember Auburnaz.
Thank you, Mr. President. Very much associate myself with all the comments of my colleagues. The bottom line is this project is too big and too important to fail, and we are all on the same team here with the same stated goal to be able to move this project forward because it's so important on so many different levels. Most of my questions have been asked. I did have a question. The supply chain has been impacted in every industry because of the pandemic, and have we seen any signs or are there any concerns that those supply chain issues may bleed into the development of the project?
They, and I'm probably going to get Kevin to expand on this, but they did kind of weave into it a little bit about a month ago, but they seem to be resolved now, and so the supply chain seems to be open and flowing. You know, I know, I'll just speak somewhat outside of the project where the supply chain from overseas at the Port of Baltimore was down a little bit, but now it's rebounding quite nicely and our container activity is moving. And once that supply chain over from Europe and China started to open back up, then our supply chain started to kind of pick back up here. But it had some impact early on, but it hasn't really recently. Kevin, do you agree?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah. Some impact kind of early on, right when it first hit. I think it hit almost every industry kind of immediately, but I think we had a lot of materials here on hand. You know, I've heard of other transit systems, transit agencies nationwide that have been hit by, you know, products coming out of China, other places, but I think we've largely mitigated that here, and, you know, we'll see kind of what that impact is, but I don't suspect it will be.
Great. Thank you both, and I yield back, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. We're getting close for this timeframe for you. Councilmember Juando, and then we're going to have one minute for Councilmember Vice President Hucker, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to Mr. Slater and Mr. Quinn for being here today. So very concerned about this, obviously, you know, the thing about P threes is that they theoretically allow us to, because we don't have the taxpayer money or enough to bear the burden of the entire cost project, you get to shift some of the burden in the risk, right? And then there's a premium charge and you get to operate and earn money over the long term. So all that is great, and I understand that's the reason. But at the end of the day, regardless of who signed the contract with which Purple Line partner of the three, of the alphabet soup partners that we have, we made a political contract and a political commitment, all of us collectively, the state and local elected officials, to say that we're going to deliver on this transportation project. And so if there are delays, which there have been, and cost overruns, which there may be, or if a partner, an additional partner is not brought in to continue the work in this agreement, we're going to have to pick it up, probably at great cost and at big delay. And so my concern is that, and I want to know how much of a reality do you think, is that possible at this point, kind of building off of a previous question, that we could be in the position of an agreement not being worked on and we're going to be talking about multiple-year delays and major cost overruns?
Sure. Let me, I think it's important that I answer that with how I've framed our conversations with our P three partners, where, you know, what I've told them is, is I'm looking at this and we're looking at this, everything with a blank slate. And I agree with you, we have a political contract and a community contract. And so, you know, what I'm looking at is, is one, risks and contracts. So, you know, in a P three, each entity is applied certain risks. That's important to us. In a P three, you know, certain people, certain parties have different contractual obligations. That's important to us when we look at these claims. And when you look at costs, it's important to look at first, you know, what, who's responsible for the costs, and usually it's somewhere in between where both parties are. But the other component of that that I'm very mindful of is there's a cost to our citizens for delay of this project. Outside of the taxpayer investment piece, there's a cost to our citizens for a project that stalled or delayed, and that's very much on the table as part of our conversations as well. But I'll reiterate that we are committed and talking at very high levels every day on this project to resolve it, and I would classify the discussions right now as very productive. We don't want to get to that outcome, and we just have to make sure that we're keeping the state's interest in mind and the citizens' interest in mind in balancing that at the same time.
Okay, and one last question. I know we're running short on time here. The, so the steps that are being taken to secure a new construction partner, that you would include that in your statement of things are positive and looking good and that you don't think, can you give a timeframe estimate?
I would tell you that we're not taking steps to secure a new construction partner. We're trying to work out our issues with the existing construction partner.
Okay, so you're not, you're not, okay, thank you. That's an important point. So you are, you're trying to just work out where you are with the current.
Absolutely. That's, the best path for this project's success is to continue where we are and keep moving and find a deal that's fair for everyone.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And the last speaker is going to be Council Vice President Hucker. I think it should be noted to our friends from the state that we're coming in right on budget and under time. I just went through the, Councilmember Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks, Greg. Thanks, Kevin, for being here. I would like to have more frequent updates, I think, so whether it's in committee or full council, so we can avoid some of the surprises you heard today and track the milestones that you're hitting. That's how design-build should work. I just want to reiterate what's been said a little bit on, and don't not leave the door open. I have further questions, I'll follow up with you, you guys individually, but as far as I'm concerned, as well as my colleagues, it sounds like this has to move forward without additional cost to Montgomery County. Our county already put a pint of blood in at the front end at the beginning of the Hogan administration. We don't have money, and we're paying twice. We're the biggest contributors to the state treasury as well. We don't have money to add to the dual contributions we've already made. MDOT renegotiated, you know, our contribution at the front end. We can't really allow that to happen a second time. Our CIP is very filled up, and I really hope you, you know, I have confidence in you all. I hope the governor is going to be personally involved, the level he needs to be, to give you the support that you need because we really can't allow the delay or any additional overruns. So glad to hear it's getting the attention from you all, and I hope.
Absolutely. And I will tell you, it's getting, the governor wants this to be a success. We're keeping him up to date and his team and making sure that everybody's up to date along the way, and he is, this continues to be a priority for him and for the citizens in free.
Terrific. Thank you so much.
Thank you all very, very much for being with us. We sincerely appreciate it. We are your partner as well in many, many other ways, not just in this one, so we want to continue to work together. Thank you, and we are adjourned. I know you all have other meetings. Thanks.
Thanks, guys.